Morning, everybody. Almost the dead middle of October 2025, October 14th. This is a regular meeting Commissioners, Court, Liberty County, Texas. Let the record show that all the Commissioners are here this morning and we do have business for the court. So let's get busy. If y'all would all please rise, leave if you'll lead us in the pledges. And Sheriff's going to lead us in the implication.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Praise be, ladies and gentlemen. We come to you this morning, Lord, thanking you for all the blessings that you give us. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity, the freedom we have to come together and discuss the ongoing business here in Liberty County. And Lord, I ask for you to be at the judge, the Commissioners, as they go through the agenda today, Lord. And Lord, I just pray that they have the wisdom that you give them to do the things that are beneficial for the most. I know, Lord, that they face a lot of controversies in their job every day. And Lord, just ask that you be with them. Lord, we have employees that may be ill or stuff. I ask that you comfort them and be with them, be with the physicians, and the doctors, and the nurses, whatever, Lord, and help them come back to the health that they once had, Lord. Lord, thank you for the talents that all our employees have. I ask a blessing on all them and all the elected officials, Lord. Let's all work together, do what's best for Liberty County. And Lord, please forgive us if we fall short. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Notices and proclamations. Diddy, I don't think we have any. But I do have one kind of a notice of, uh, how about them hardened harness? I mean, that's, that, wow, that, they're doing pretty good. Quite proud of them. There's a lot, lot to be proud of, too. I mean, I won't mention the Aggies, though. Yeah, I will.
Early we start voting on Monday, the 20th.
Start voting on Monday, the 20th, okay?
Early voting starts Monday, the 20th.
Okay.
For proclamation.
And last, until when?
Halloween and then election days and then before.
Okay, good. All righty. All righty then. Uh, next item up is public comment. And William Conlon with LJ Engineering, y'all are working on our drainage study and drainage plan. Wayne, come on up and visit with us a little bit. Tell us about how far along we are and how we're looking. Yes, sir. Great spot. You have a tendency to have a microphone.
These are all the benchmarks.
This is a lot of stuff.
Yeah, he can borrow that. There you go.
Okay, is this better? Everything work? Um, so again, I'm William Conlon with LJ Engineering, Senior Project Manager for the Master Drainage Plan, the grant fund to study, to analyze kind of all the flood risk and drainage impacts and updates Atlas 14 rainfall, along with a lot of data collection and survey efforts that we've also been doing that were rolled into the grant. Kind of a quick update, and I say quick, hopefully it's less than 10 minutes. I promise I'll be fast. The most of the past nine, 10 months has been spent on a lot of data collection effort, a lot of acquiring the information needed to develop a new rainfall study utilizing the Atlas 14 rainfall. Harris County, Harris Galveston Area Council completed a 2024 LiDAR aerially flown topo survey that's been received and incorporated, still in draft form, but we have way better data than we've had before. That full package of information should be finalized for public use in about three or four more months. But our interim use has been helpful because we've done peer review for them as well and found gaps and holes and filled those in as well. So it's a really good base information for the terrain. What that allowed us to do was identify new drainage areas, much smaller, fine details. So the packet in front of you, Exhibit 1 is a drainage area map. This effectively is a semi-redelineation of the watersheds. There are about eight to 10 watersheds in Liberty County. Three of them drain towards the Harris County side, two directly drain into the Trinity River. And then there's three that drain out towards the east. Each one of those also had probably four or five channels that were studied inside of those drainage areas as part of the FEMA level studies up to this point. Our goal is to study upwards of 1,500, almost 2,000 miles of channel, probably three times the amount of channels that had been studied in the past. We'll now have flood risk information on them by the time we're done in a couple of years. Kind of see down in the summary table that there's about 1,300 square miles of drainage areas. We've delineated almost 800 drainage sub-basins and again, about 1,700 miles of channel. So that level of detail then allows us to start analyzing where does the water go? How's it going to get from point A to point B? You can imagine when a airplane flies LiDAR, they shoot the laser down and bounces off the ground, bounces back up. If the area has standing water in it, water bounces right back up. So you have this really awesome terrain. All of a sudden it goes dead flat as it goes across something that's standing water. So as part of the grant study, we identified the need for some bathymetric survey, which is below water survey. So we have taken boats and, you know, 28-foot boats with triple beam sonar. We have pontoon boats that are remote controlled and just grown men and waiters walking across the stream, identifying the below water surface elevations for the channel. So on the second exhibit, the bathymetric survey, that everything in yellow lines are ones that we've already hit. And there's probably about 30% more that we're still working to get. So this is as of right now, this is what we have covered so far. Exhibit 2, which is the bathymetric one. It's a real colorful one of the yellow lines. And so that information gets merged in with the terrain and the surface. And so now we have a more complete understanding of where the water goes and how deep everything is. So we can build our models around that. Jump into the third exhibit, the benchmark monumentation. It's the one with the kind of white background. These are survey-based monuments that were installed in the ground. These are probably 30-foot rods, 40-foot rods, jackhammer down in the ground, the top three or four feet encased in concrete with a metal cylinder and a top that's bolted down to where it's kind of protected. And then about three inches below ground, there is the center of the rod floating, anchored to the ground, and it will move with the ground. So it is a hard, legit point that will not move over time. So before this effort, there were six monuments that the USGS, the US Geological Service, monitored and managed in Liberty County. So if a surveyor, engineer, designer wanted to go build something, they had to run to one of those six around the entire county and run off of that, go do their monument and come back and tie in to make sure it was on the same datum and the same elevation. We've now constructed about 280 monuments, one square mile separation across the entire county. There's a webpage at the top of the exhibit. That webpage is live. It's not really active unless you know where to go look for it because we want to talk to y'all first about it. But each one of these monuments has a webpage portal to it. It has a picture of where it is in space. It has the information associated for the northern and eastern, the survey, the elevation, the datum. It also has a one-page data sheet that incorporates a lot of the information that's needed. So talking with the GLO a couple of days ago, because again, this is a grant fund from them, state money. They're wanting to have more conversations with y'all about the data that comes out of this kind of quote-unquote, who's the owner, who's the user, how does it get advertised, how does it get shared, how does it get broadcasted? So this will be our first conversation of coordination with the GLO and with like the USGS. And how do we broadcast to them and share it with them and get it uploaded to their site? So it becomes statewide data for everybody in the public. I mean, it's, it's already incredible stuff. But if you ever get bored, there is one, real quickly, right on this corner, right out here. If you look right on the back of the curb, there's a metal plate. And if you unscrew it with a flat history driver, which you can do, you'll see there's just a single, simple rod, and that's the tip of the monument right there. So if you get bored, you go see what it looks like.
Yeah.
These benchmarks, is this all the benchmarks that are in?
Yes, sir. Every single one of those is now being structured.
This one here. You got one there in front of my house. It's not listed on here.
Is it one that we set? Or is it one that USGS set?
No, it's one y'all set.
And it's not one of the ones around it?
There's not one around it.
260, not 260 or 215?
Yep.
Okay.
I want to check that. Right on 146.
Between 260 and 215? Okay.
At least it was your truck out there doing it.
Probably was us, man. They set almost 300 of them, so it could be, I mean...
Because there was a mile between mine and 2830, and then there's a mile back to this one here.
Okay.
So there's a two-mile missing deal in here.
Well, there were, there were one square mile off. So from any spot, it's one mile. So it's two mile between the dots. So if there's two mile separation...
There's definitely, there's, but you don't have it listed. It's definitely one there.
Okay, I'll double check.
Yep, thank you.
Exhibit 4 is our survey crossings. These are bridges, culverts, any kind of structure crossing of a channel and a road. This was also needed to help get the surface kind of cleaned up so that water could flow across the roads. You can imagine when an aerially flown topography is taken, shoots the laser down, hits the ground, you get top of bank, flow line channel, you know, the whole cross-section. But if you hit a road, it's not going to be able to pick up the culvert of the road, so it picks up the road deck itself. So the terrain will show that a road is higher and blocking flow from a channel. So we have to go and identify where the crossings are. We identified upwards of 6,000 crossings in Liberty County. We try to prioritize, strategize, and rank them as ones of importance by size, by, you know, proximity to, you know, critical facilities or population centers. So we have about 380, 400 that were, we called category A. Those are ones that we needed really good, full detailed information. So we're going to put those directly into the model themselves in super detail and have the knowledge that that structure is important. The Level B crossings were ones that we needed a lot of attributes on, but we didn't really fully need a survey. So to be faster, we went out and did site visits. We picked up five, six, seven pieces of information about it. Number of barrels, the type of barrel, the size of the barrel, the general elevation between the top of the road and the flow line, you know, the head wall or wing wall structure. So general modeling characteristics that are needed, but we didn't need full detailed topos. It would be faster. And we did about 1,200 of those. And then the other 4,500 were simply identified. And we used Google Earth, we used GIS, we used other means to kind of get a general sense of what that size was. And just physically, we call it burning into the topo. We burned it into the terrain to where it effectively forced a crossing so that water could get from one side to the other. And it helps with the hydraulic connectivity. But it's not a perfect model. But these things, a 24-inch pipe, a 36-inch pipe, a single barrel, it's really not going to make or break the model and the results. It helps us get it across there. And if, when we get the models running, we find that some of these have high head loss conditions where there's big separation of upstream and downstream of the road or something is just really sensitive, we will, we have time and money still in the budget to go do some more topo. We will go back and pick those up and refine the model from there. But to get it started, those 4,500 were burned into the terrain. So every one of these structures is in the model. Everyone has an attribute. Everyone is now GIS database. So we have asset management type information as well. And that was a big ordeal. That was about $2 million of work to get all that topoed and picked up.
So when this is complete, you'll be able to provide us data where we need to improve these, add to, because there's been any number of calls since I've been in this position to add a crossover. And we, we keep telling them, we're waiting on the data to come out to support because everybody thinks or knows they need additional or improvements to their crossover culverting.
Yep. And so, and the value of the models that we're developing, there, there's two types of way to model drainage in kind of this area. The first one is what we call applied hydrology. And that is where it's more river-centric. You, you take your drainage areas, you take your watersheds, you've developed a peak flow for that sub-basin or something. And then you apply it to the center of the channel. And you say, this flow builds up over time and it flows down the channel. And when it overloads the channel, it flows in the overbanks and floods out the overbank. And that's a river-centric, that's what FEMA models are based on. FEMA mapping is based on. It's, the flows are in the river and they bubble out. The second methodology that's come out of the past eight, five, eight years with a lot of the technology we have is what we call rain on mesh. And that's where you effectively take the entire sub-basin terrain again. And instead of saying, here's the flow at a point and you dump it into the river, you let the rainfall hit on the entire surface at once. And it works its way to the channel. Instead of having the channel bubble out, you're trying to see how does it get to the channel? And then when it gets there, what does it do when it bubbles out? So the detail that comes out of that, we have a lot more understanding of what we call the urban flood risk of the water trying to get to the channel and things that block it on the way, not bubbling out flooding the normal floodway flood plan that you see on a map. So the information is a little more sensitive, some of the data, which is why the 6,000 culverts are important because we need to know how the water gets to the channel. And if there's a crossing that isn't in the model, like there's a physical road blocked of a culvert or a roadside ditch or something, that water will have to build up and go over before it can get in. So if we identify those type things, we can burn them back in, we can make it more connected. If we find that there's just an excessive amount of water building up on one side, we can start modifying the improvement side once you get the models built. The alternative analysis can be, let's put in three, four more barrels. But if you do that, the water that used to sit here is now sitting over here.
Right.
And we got to see, does it impact somebody? And so we can run those scenarios real quickly. I say quickly. These models are easy to set up. They take hours to run because it's bulks of data. And with a county the size of this, with the Trinity, when we run it with the Trinity flows coming in, I mean, we're talking two, three days after it rains. And so trying to say a 100-year rainfall hits the county directly while the Liberty is, or while the Trinity is peaking, I mean, that's like catastrophic or catastrophic. So there's some sensitivity of how do we play with that? Do we model the Trinity at peak and then see what a 10-year storm does? Do we model a 100-year storm for us and a 10-year in the Trinity? Do we let the Trinity be just down low and we get flooded? I mean, there's, there's ways to model. So we can have those scenarios. We will. But yes, once the models are built, we will be able to manipulate where culverts go, see the benefits and the impacts upstream and downstream of those areas. And we have, we will have complete understanding of just about every river and crossing that I can think of in the entire county. Some of the weird nuances that we're finding right now is like, for example, on the east side, Pine Island watershed, which is the whole northern half, and it kind of spins over. There's a, 80% of that watershed is outside the county.
Yep.
The HGAC's LiDAR stopped at Liberty County's line. Jefferson, Harden, they did not participate in the acquisition of that 2024 LiDAR. So we don't have data over there from new stuff. We have the old 2018. We have some bigger data over there. Luckily, the GLO is working on the east, the river flood basin study for the east region with the Sabina and everything over there. They also have the Trinity. They have the Sand Jack. And so we're working with them to get their models for like off-site flows, the bigger regional flows coming down. So we can have, what we terminology is inflow hydrographs. Where you take a line across the edge of the county and say, at this point, here is the flow over time, the hydrograph, the shape of the water coming in. And it comes into the county. Everything that rains gets added. And it actually leaves the county and then comes back in on the little dog leg over to the, to the right. And forgive me, I write and left. I just look at a map all day. But it's a, Pine Island leaves the county, comes back in. So we're actually going to have almost two separate models of Pine Island. We're going to have the north half where it comes in from off-site and leaves, and that's a model. And then we'll have kind of the dog leg side where it comes back in as a new flow because there's more area coming in as well. And then the stuff that lands in Liberty and then drains out. So that, that's why I would say eight to 10 watersheds. Some of them we're splitting on purpose because it may be the same watershed, but it's two models. If that makes sense? So that's, that's kind of the, the gist of what we're shooting for. And we have two more exhibits here, but number five is a real simple, simple exhibit. This is just the channel type. This is one of the attributes we have to understand when we do our models. But is it a, a natural earthen channel? Or is it kind of more of an improved, kind of man-made, still earthen? I can't think of any channels that are, you know, major channels that are concrete lined. I don't think we have any that I can think of.
We don't need those.
Yeah. And we're going to work to stay away from those.
A little percolation factor would be nice.
Yeah. And then the, the last exhibit on the back page, that's kind of our understanding of percent impervious map, percent impervious layer for the county. Again, as we, the, the imperviousness and the channel types all go into some of the calculations for the drainage, the, the flow, the flow development. So if you can imagine water lands, if it's concrete, it becomes runoff. If it's grass, it gets absorbed. If it's sand, it gets really absorbed. If it's clay, it kind of absorbs and mostly runs off. So the type of soil, the type of development, the type of channel, all of these things go into the timing and the volume that becomes runoff versus absorption. So all of these parameters, we have completely finished the analysis countywide of that data. That information goes into a big spreadsheet. The spreadsheet becomes input into what we have an HMS model, which is a HECC. The Army Corps of Engineers Department that does drainage is called the HECC, the Hydraulic Engineering Council. They have two softwares, HMS and RAS. HMS is the flows, RAS is the water surface elevations. So our HMS model is complete. We have peak flows at every one of those 600 and 760 sub-basins. Our two steps now are identify, as we talked about, the applied hydrology where you apply those flows at a point in the channel. We are identifying the GIS line work to have that segment of channel that a flow gets added to. So there'll be 760 lines, the county, that will have each one of those hydrographs dumped into it. And that will run the old FEMA-style flood map information or flood RAS model. And then we're also working on the rain on mesh terrain right now, getting that cleaned up with that is things called brake lines and inflow boundary conditions and outflow boundary conditions and tailwater conditions and backwater, things like that. So the rain on mesh is probably, I'd say a month away. The applied hydrology is probably a couple of weeks away. Neither one of those will have the off-site yet. We're still working with the GLO to get the off-site boundary conditions. But to get the flow internal, hopefully to have something in about two or three weeks that we can have a first draft internal review, make sure we're seeing things right, make sure the right number of culverts are identified, the terrain is flowing in the right way. There's no like just catastrophic spikes in water surface and kind of go from there.
Okay.
Any questions?
So at what point is it going to be dumbed down enough to say, dig here, culvert there?
Good question. So this is, and I only have one of these, so I apologize. I can pass it around and leave it with y'all if y'all want. But this is kind of our schedule. I don't know if you can show it. Our schedule right now, so the, the grant is scheduled to run out March of 26. We're, we've already discussed with them to add extensions. The grant is allowed to one-year extensions. We know we're going to need both of them. There's just that much work to be done. So we're, we're applying that grant extension right now. Our existing condition model completion is July of 26. The alternative, I'm sorry, problem identification, prioritization of need and alternative analysis is July of 27. So by July 27, we should have the answers to the questions you're having, but to be able to start talking about them July 26. So it, we, I, I do have a feel that by February 26, I will have a complete working model with both types of hydrology applied. And we can start having the conversations, what does this look like? If there are specific things that we need, like a very specific road project or a bridge or something, we have the ability to kind of, we call it pilot. We can take one watershed and go deep dive into it and understand every technique and method we need to do to the whole thing and confirm it's working full wide and then be able to use that as A, some answers, and B, the method. So if there is a specific area that you have questions on, we can definitely dig into it.
So the other thing is, we incorporate grant writers into your, your findings so that what, once it's all published and ready to roll out, that we have some funds available to go do something with.
So I believe as soon as we finish the modeling, the existing condition model, we will have the ability to do some prioritization and problem. From that point, we can start developing what the state flood plan has, FMEs or FMPs. FME is the evaluation, FMP is a project. What we're using for, an FMP is like, this already had a PER, a study, a deeper dive analysis. But if we have a problem area that we know is going to be bad and needs something, we can put a couple of days worth of work to identify high-level solutions, put the numbers to it, and then put it on the state flood plan. My understanding of the state flood plan for the grant writing stuff, at least for the state flood plan side of the grants, that I believe was closed two months ago for the 2026 window. I think the next one is two years, so 20, late 27, I think is the next application for the state flood plan amended list. We keep an eye on that. Now, there's other grants, of course, as y'all know with everything else. And we do have a player on our team that is really good at that side of the coin. And so when we get into it, we can definitely identify programs that fit y'all's, you know, county, county needs and county makeup, if that makes sense.
Okay. Sounds good. Anybody else? William, thank you. Now, I'm going to call my old friend to give this a little bit of a enlightenment in layman's terms. Jim Schneider, I have a question for you. How easy does this make an engineer's work? Just curious.
This is public comment.
Yeah.
So if we, if we want to develop it with more questions, we should probably ask folks back later.
I'm sure I'm going to be asked this question in public. But hey, we'll let them send it to us. We'll ask that question. I'll catch you later on to that one. Thank you. All right. Thank you, William.
Yes, sir.
Uh, any conflicts of interest? Anybody? Anybody? Going once, going twice? Anybody? All right, consent agenda. I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to look at this. If so, do you have any questions, corrections? I know that, yeah, you have to do an add-on. Yep.
So I did have one question. I noticed one of the vacation comp time pays was for the maintenance coordinator at the jail. Have you, or are you have somebody else in place now? Or I thought that was a pretty important position. It looked like the negative date was October 4th. So because we're doing so much.
Maintenance is still going on. Just that person resigned.
Okay. Stress of the job.
It's going yesterday.
Okay. All right. But so somebody's operating in that place now. Okay. That's the only question I have.
I've got a question on the 75th, oh, 6-1, the 215-hour comp time. How was that achieved and who signed off on that?
I don't know. Would be the, hold on a second.
Apologies. On the advanced certificate pay for Cole Holden, the $250 per month on the agenda is correct. In the packet, it is, it says per pay.
We need to get the microphone over to you. Yeah.
Cole Holden, $250 per month is correct on the agenda. It's not correct on the payroll change notice. It says per pay period on the payroll change notice. So just note that correction. And then on Latysia Galvin, it is $25 per month on the agenda. The correct amount is $50 per month. And back to Cole Holden. I spoke with Mrs. Bergman about this, and he should have been paid that advanced certificate pay back from March forward. So if we can, we need to pay him this. back from March forward. So if we can, we need to pay him this seven months at two hundred and fifty dollars, which would be a total of seventeen hundred and fifty dollars back pay.
Kim, do you know who signed off on Ms. Thrasher's?
And the bulk of that comp time was earned by Ms. Thrasher when Judge Moorefield was still in office. There, there is some time earned subsequent to him leaving office. I don't know exactly how much that was. But my understanding is the comp time that was earned after he left office was to train the new employee who was coming in.
Kim, I missed a couple of things. I got, Letitia Galvin should be fifty dollars per month. What was the other one?
Cole Holden should be paid seventeen hundred and fifty dollars back pay for his certificate pay.
Sixteen, sixteen what?
Seventeen hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
And his pay going forward will be two hundred and fifty dollars per month. Thank you.
Anything else?
Wayne, did you get yours in?
Yeah, I got a payroll correction on DA's pre-trial fund, special revenue funds, not the general fund. There's three clerks and they're stopping. Needs to be increased from two thousand to four thousand on these three individuals.
You're saying the majority of this comp time for Ms. Thrasher was done while Moorefield was in office?
Yes, sir.
And those afterwards were done by, for training?
Yes, sir. That is my understanding.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda along with the add-ons.
All right, you got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Is there any further discussion? One once, going twice. Okay. Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-one, regular agenda. First one's from me is information item. Sheriff, how are we doing today?
Judge, we're working. The fire restoration part, the painting crews are currently taped, filled in all the cracks, they're priming it, getting ready to paint it. The replacement parts in the fall west hall, the door and the window have been ordered, supposed to be here by December. That has nothing to do with the cells. This is the office that was there. The expanded metal, they're still putting that up. We're kind of at a delay right now, working with Harold's office on getting the highback. We kind of got the cart for the horse on there, and we're doing the roof. They've got to have some vents in there. They couldn't cut through the expanded metal. So we'll get the vents in, Stephanie and Harold, or maybe Harold and Stephanie, I don't know which the, which the way it was. We have regular meetings on this. And we found that there's going to be a need, which I believe Matthew and Catherine and Harold have talked to me about in the executive session to help us out there, but as soon as we get the highback system in that area approved, Cotton said it'll take two days to finish the ceiling, and then everything will be up with the fire alarms and everything. We should be able to contact the Commission on Jail Standards and get those approved. Highback, we've had three contractors look. Chief Knox helped us out because a couple of them needed mechanical drawings, and he got that to Stephanie. Stephanie got that out to the people to give us a bid. Now, this is for the whole unit, whole jail, not just the end. It must be the whole thing there. So we'll know exactly what that'll be, and that'll make Duane happy if it's less than what I projected, right? So the door locks, we, the hinges and everything, we replaced two hundred and forty-six hinges and fourteen locks so far. The intercoms, there have been a hundred and ten intercoms installed. We still have about maybe forty-five or so more to install, and that's basically in the hallways. The fire hoses came in, but they made them wrong measurements, the vendor did, so they sent them back. We got the replacements coming in. As soon as they come in, we'll get those installed. The fire alarms, Siemens will be here on the twenty-seventh to check out all the fire codes, alarm codes, and clear any codes that are not associated with that. So they'll be here for that. Our maintenance, Commissioner Caloric, Adass, and they've replaced all the outlets, the electrical outlets in dorms one through four. They've got all new bulbs in the hallways that had burned out. They cleaned all the clogged drains and replaced all the blowing fuses, and we're just ready to finish the roof, and then we'll be, the highback system on that end to get it. That's it, so far.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
All right, just, this is, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Motion Gerald. Second. Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-two from Sheriff, information item in reference to Senate Bill Eight. Sheriff's in Texas counties with more than a hundred thousand residents are mandated to request and enter partnerships with ICE, known as a two-eight-seven-G agreement. ICE has three models to choose from. There will be an explanation stating the reasons that the warrant service officer program model has been chosen. Sheriff?
Yes, sir, Judge. Senate Bill Eight addresses the fact that any county that has a jail has to sign the two-eight-seven-G and work with the federal government. There's three models. The first one would be the most expensive, and it's called the Task Force Model, TFM. And basically, that gives the broadest authority to all of our people, but what happens is, is we have to delegate deputies to do nothing but ICE stuff. If they can't contact somebody, they got to take them to the facility in Conroe, or the nearest facility, back and forth at the county's expense right now. So we'd have to furnish the deputies, pay their salary, pay the vehicles, insurance and everything. And I opted out of that because we just don't have enough deputies to where we can be able to do that. The bigger counties are doing that. The next model was the jail enforcement model. That required four weeks of training, and we'd appoint at least four of our COs to do nothing but ICE work on the computer. Again, that'd be our expense. I opted not to do that since they would be ICE employees that we're paying. So the model that we took, because it's quoted more suitable for jurisdictions with limited resources, actually, we're going to allow the Liberty County Sheriff's Office to serve administrative warrants on people that are already in custody. They'll have a computer, that's an eight-hour course that they'll have to take online, and they will notify ICE. It'll cut down on the transport time, and they have forty-eight hours to come over and get them. So that's the one we took, the WSO, the Warrant Service. Any questions?
There was a section at the Texas Association of Counties Conference last week with a sheriff from Art, not Harden, Kim. Yeah, I guess he's in Sills, I don't know. Woodville, that area, can't remember.
Tyler County.
I believe it was Harden County, but.
Harden County.
And they, they talked about these models as well. Made it sound like that, that you would start at one level and then you would segue into another in the future. Is that how you understand?
Well, I would say yes, because when we met with the ICE people that brought us the contract and stuff, they said in the future, their plans are to be reimbursing the county for any expenses, and we would certainly hire more deputies if we had the money to do it, if they would pay for it. For instance, you have the jail enforcement model, Chambers County's doing that. Montgomery County's doing the same thing. Orange County is doing the same thing we're doing. So until we can get reimbursed by the government, I don't, you know, want to go out on a limb and try to spend some money.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
I, all I'm saying is there's a lot of, everybody's doing this now because it just came out.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Everybody, this is their first time around for.
Yes, sir.
I have a question on our residency of a hundred thousand. Census in twenty-twenty said it was at ninety-one, six, twenty-eight. Was there another study done between that time and now stating that we're, because everybody knows we're over a hundred thousand? But has there been a study done that puts us over a hundred thousand?
And I believe, Commissioner, that's in reference to another Senate bill. Senate Bill Eight just says, if the county has a jail, you will sign a contract. No matter what the occupancy of the jail is. Question?
No, sir. I was just wondering if we, there was a study done that I didn't know about.
Yeah, when the ICE person came by and visited with us, they noted that we were over that population, even though the census didn't show that.
I was, because I was curious to find out exactly how many people we did have.
I have no clue. Yes, sir.
All right, this is an information item. Again, I'll ask for a motion to accept.
Make a motion, take no action.
Take no action. Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-three from Mr. Poston, consider and approve Liberty County Attorney's Office to apply for a Texas House Bill four-two-six-four for full-time employees with a master proficiency certificate after September first, twenty-twenty-five. Pretty standard that we've been chasing after for a while, Matthew.
That's correct, just like everybody else's.
Yep. Second. Motion Greg. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight-four from Coswell Precinct One, consider and approve Liberty County Coswell's office, Precinct One, to apply for Texas House Bill four-two-six-four to full-time employees with a master proficiency certificate after September first, twenty-twenty-five. We're going to have quite a few of these properties, so just.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion Gerald. Was that you, Bruce, or Greg?
It's Greg.
Okay. Second from Greg. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. From Precinct Four, again, the same measure.
It was approved.
Second.
Motion from Greg. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Number eight-six from Mr. Poston, consider and approve resolution designating the county judge as the official authorized to apply for and accept the twenty-twenty-six indigent defense grant with the Texas Indigent Defense Commission on behalf of Liberty County. Said resolution also designated the county auditor as the financial officer for the purposes of this grant. Matthew, you want to add anything to it?
Nothing really to add. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-seven from Ms. Harris over in the Treasurer's Office, consider and approve ending the ten-ninety-five-C forms being printed by TAC H-E-B-P. Printed forms will be available to employees upon request of the HR department. TAC H-E-B-P will continue to file forms with the IRS as long as Liberty County participates in the Affordable Care Act reporting and tracking services. Ms. Harris?
Okay, so the federal government decided that employers didn't have to.
Yes, you turn your microphone, please.
The federal government decided that the employers didn't have to do as much work as they once thought they did under the Obamacare. And so now we no longer have to provide employees with paper ten-ninety-five Cs. And so this will be a savings of probably somewhere around three thousand dollars, which is always good news. And I recommend on the TAC request for decision form that we check the box, we do not wish to have ten-ninety-five-C forms printed for calendar year twenty-twenty-five. And TAC will continue to file those with the Internal Revenue Service for us.
Correct me if I'm wrong, ten-ninety-five-C is the insurance?
It is.
Yes, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Reporting, yes, it still has to be reported to the IRS.
All right. What's the other court?
I made a motion. Greg seconded it.
Couldn't hear it.
Yes, they did.
Now we got that cleared up. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. Same motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-eight from Ms. Soliday, consider and approve Gemini Section One replat for lots one through six. Attached, please find LJ Engineering's recommendation for approval. Melinda?
Where's Gemini again? We have so many subjects in.
I need to start numbering because I honestly have to.
So Harv, right?
Commissioner Woodruff.
Okay, Harv, right.
Up towards, yeah, towards this line order. This is just a replat of the lots one through six. I believe this is on the coal side.
No, wait, it's on the street, backs up to East River Road. And basically what happened was we worked with Commissioner Woodruff, add a lane, a turn lane into the new subdivision. And because the turn lane got added, the road got lined obviously. The roadside ditch needed to be moved over, and that roadside ditch was encroaching into some of the lots. So a replat of lots, so the roadside ditch is not even back on the lots. That's all it is.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. And even with the train going by, I still heard you say that. Any further discussion?
I do have one question. You included the plat fee in, you know, the grid shoulder that paid their fee. So my question is, does that fee pay for the entire cost for LJA to do their review? Because I know they did that.
When LJA does reviews, we get invoices for that separately, and then the developer pays those invoices back to us.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-nine from Ms. Soliday, consider and approve payment to Berto Sol for the third year of contract DIRTSO four-two-two-seven for permitting software in the amount of forty-six thousand, seventy-one dollars, twenty-seven cents. This final year runs from ten-one, twenty-five through nine-thirty, twenty-six. Contract was originally approved during the eleven, twenty-eight, twenty-three Commissioners Court meeting. Melinda?
It's twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, so last year, my three-year contract. Hopefully, we don't have to go through this again. We're still learning on the software. They're still updating stuff for us, and I think it's easier. I have not opened it up completely to the general public, but our developers and our installers and our builders can now apply for their permits online. And it makes it a little bit easier. Our office isn't quite as crowded, and the big guys don't want to come in the office. They don't have to anyway. Because we're having to hire someone to actually shuttle the stuff back and forth between them. Now it's easier. As soon as they apply, we get notified to go in and do any of the the reviews. And we know that everything is prepared. It's working really well.
So will, will this pay for the software we bought, or is it going to be a continuing maintenance?
This is the last payment.
This is the last payment, so it won't be next year. We'll all have to.
Unless we have any kind of updates that are required or anything like that, it should be it.
Okay, all right, great. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion Gerald, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Melinda, but you're not through yet. Okay. Eight-ten, consider and approve Gulf Island Park LOMR, or lower. Boy, that's a good acronym.
I know, right?
Yeah, review. Attached for your review is LJ Engineering. No objection to the L-O-M-R for the site. It's currently documented, provided that the project is not substantially modified from the current presented design. Okay?
Ms. Anna Chamberlain from LJ, she's been a godsend for all of this flood plan stuff, so she's very thorough. I'm really glad to have her. I'm really glad to have her. Since I don't have my certified footprint manager, so I'm just kind of a. I have no order here.
I want to verify L O M R means.
Letter of map revision.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was correct.
Make a motion to approve. Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Further discussion?
Yeah, I had one question.
Okay.
Sorry. On page two or three of the handout you provided, item six, exhibit two, it says recommending altering before submission to FEMA. They did get grant their approval kind of unconditionally, but that one recommendation was in there. Page two or three, six, exhibit two. See where it says recommend?
Yes, yes.
So how do we make sure that happens?
I can get the Gulf Island Park people and ask them if they can take care of it.
Okay, send you an email when that happens so that, because that, again, that was part of the recommendation.
Thank you.
Got a motion to second. Any further discussion? There are none. Call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eleven, from Ms. Salade. Boy, you got a slew of them on here today, don't you? Okay. Consider and approve Halit Materials Sand and Gravel No Rise Review. Attached for your view is L J Engineering's no objection to the no rise certificate certification for the site as currently proposed, provided that the project is not substantially modified from the current presented design.
This originally was done on a conditional letter of map revision and has been changed to the no rise review. Correct.
Motion from Greg. Crickets.
I had a question, or I'll second it.
Okay.
Question there. So one of the things that says you had to send some kind of application to Texas Parks and Wildlife. And in, in that handout, they showed a copy of the email that went to Texas Parks and Wildlife. They said they have not received a response. I don't think there'd be any problem with this. Again, L J A's approved it. But again, there was something missing from the application, and I just have a little reluctance on that. But if, if the consequences of not doing the Texas Parks and Wildlife application, you, you act like you know a little bit about this.
So we, yeah, they, they require you to, they require you to notify them, but Texas Parks and Wildlife is taking the stance that they don't respond.
Oh.
And it's, it's a, we were told that it looks good.
Good to know.
There's, there's no like, no objection or no like, if you don't respond within sixty days, it's on approved.
No response.
It's, it's.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that motion from Commissioner Arthur.
All right. Now we got a second. Is there any further discussion? Come on, Bruce, you got opportunity here. There are none. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, number eight, twelve, from Ms. Salade. Consider and approve Horseshoe Lake Camp. Sounds good. No rise cer- certification. This item was brought before the court on May twenty-seven twenty-five and was tabled at that time pending the textile approval of the street tie-in and drainage. Record has been received and is in your packet for review. Mr. Chase Evans from Farmer Construction is here to go over the plans and proposals, also to answer any questions you may have about this development. Mr. Farmer, if you would. Excuse me, yeah, Mr. Evans, yeah, from Farmer. That's an awful large rule of.
Well, yeah, I didn't notice that. My full-size set. Um, so we're proposing to build a summer camp, Christian church camp off of seven eighty-seven in Cleveland. We've got the camp director and their construction manager here as well. So day one, four bunk houses, cafeteria, a chapel, open every building with basketball and volleyball courts. And then the camp director's residence also going to be on site. So about a month and a half ago, we received text dots, no objection and permit. Turned that into the county, they approved plans and we're here for that last step to get the permit.
Of course, you know I had a question. Who's signature is on the district engineer's line in that handout? I can't read.
Where is this located at?
Oh, is that from the text up?
Yes, ma'am. It's the text up page.
Myron Resard's name is on the front line.
It's the one behind that one.
Jeff one?
Anyway, I know that they were, I was just, the only reason I ask is I know that they, we didn't have a named district engineer at the time.
Right, right.
And it says in that form that he signed, no delegation.
I know, I know.
So that's is, so is it a legal document when it's?
Well, district engineer or designated, designate approval.
They would have a.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should have a de facto.
Yeah.
District engineer, but it says no delegates. And that's, I was, I was just asking to make sure that that was the, their designate during that time before the, the new district engineer was named.
Because that was signed back on ninety-four.
Yeah.
Myron was who we dealt with on the daily. And I know the last step, they requested a traffic generation study done.
Okay.
And turned that in. And my understanding is the person who signed that was.
So we, this, it's a, this is a legal document. We're all good.
So where is this located at exactly?
On seven eighty-seven, as you're heading east, between two twenty-three and Trinity River on seven eighty-seven.
Okay.
Yes.
That one we approved.
Second.
Motion, Greg. Second from Bruce. To approve. Is there any further discussion? There are none. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Item number eight, thirteen, from Ms. Salade. Consider and approve estimate payment request number five to King Solutions Services LLC in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the ARPA. I'll say that again, ARPA-funded City of Hard and Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation. All backup is attached with signatures as required. Bruce, self-explanatory. Motion from Greg. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion?
Just about wrapped it up.
Yeah, we did that one very well through last week.
Good.
I took pictures and I can send them off.
James is the same way.
I haven't, they haven't gotten a notification.
Sorry, Your Honor.
That's okay. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, number eight, fourteen, from Ms. Salade. Consider and approve estimate payment request number six to King Solutions Services LLC in the amount of eighty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars sixty cents for the ARPA. Say it again, ARPA-funded City of Hard and Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Rehabilitation. All backup is attached with signatures as required. Self-explanatory as it is.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Actually, he beat you too at that, Greg. I've got it out this year. Any further discussion? There are none. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, fifteen, from Ms. Salade. Consider and approve Pine Forest RV Park. This park is located off of County Road thirty-nine ninety-five in Precinct Two.
Correction. Two, yeah, you say two, you got three.
Two.
Yeah.
It will have six RV hookups on two point eight three acres with a commercial septic which passed inspection in May of twenty-three. They are now ready to complete the park.
Wow.
Yes, sir. I have been asked by the court to start bringing all of the multiple parks and RV parks to the court.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
To let y'all know because they are popping up everywhere. I'm trying to do the best review I can on these because we don't have any set rules and regulations on our RV parks or multiple parks. So my main precedent is the septic and the drainage on these places. So we have a little guideline. We don't have any set rules. So I'm bringing all for y'all to know where they are at, how many are there going to be, and stuff like that. I'm doing the best I can.
So do we need to have rules and regulations for these parks?
We probably, we probably need to develop some. We need to talk to L J A about that.
They're starting to pop up. A lot of people don't even have an acre and want to do a park. And I'm like, no. Because with drainage and septic, you know, they're on a home. Once you get a commercial septic system in there, you don't have enough.
We've got somebody at L J A here, but can I ask you a couple of questions?
Texting you with the team, so you think you're on board.
What, what, you know, we get approved, we've got drainage and septic regulations. What are the areas where we probably need to look at?
This is a little outside of my burden. I was wondering, as soon as you said RVs, I started texting. Okay, RV parks is part of, because we have a meeting tomorrow internal with Brian Brayhouse, Lady Katie Harrison's and planning group, one of our land development managers who does like the actual site development side, which is why I called me. So we get their input as well and understand their, you know, hiccups and hurdles and things. And then work with y'all as well, so.
We probably need to sit down with y'all. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine. I just kind of want to hear from you, but.
The other thing I can think of is clearances of fire services and stuff like that.
We addressed public health and public safety, the septic and the drainage.
So the grant study that we have for the professional drainage plan incorporates a criteria manual update. It's kind of the criteria manual update for the flood damage shortages and drainage criteria. We are incorporating some of the subdivision reviews to make sure we get those kind of in line. So by proxy, we're modifying those, but not really the same coverage. But we are making sure they're the same language. We can definitely review the RV parks as well and get some. One of our goals right now is to review other areas. So we have yeah, the good and the bad, what works and what's not.
Have you got a chance to review any of this to see if it meets kind of public safety requirements?
I have not seen them.
When they're on, and that's the hard part about these because it's, it's private property. And I can't tell them, no, you can't do this. Because there's nothing in our regulations that says they can't. Now, it's going to be, now, this is just going to be six, no, six RV hookup. But now, we go to larger ones. I do try to send them to the fire marshal because, you know, when it gets to larger, they're, they've got a lot more rules they have to follow for the size of the roads, the turnarounds and that kind of thing.
Yeah, we're looking at two point eight three acres.
Yeah, yeah.
Six RVs.
So I guess to Greg's comment, we should probably have a workshop in the future with L J A to talk about our, our changes that they're proposing to our building.
So we have a really detailed spreadsheet that we developed over the past couple of weeks because we've had these conversations with y'all kind of the past, and Brian Brayhouse, we're unlocking the question back. We have a meeting tomorrow to really deep dive into this with like five or six key engineers that have your hands in this pot. I think when we get that spreadsheet put together, our next step is to present to y'all, here's the fifteen things that we think need to be incorporated. Here's three good resources that we found. Here's two that we don't think work well. And here's what we kind of want to let y'all think about and then get some guidance from y'all. So that is our next goal, probably a week away.
Okay.
And we will add RVs to it.
Thank you. So Matthew, I take it that we can't reject this?
We can't, and we have to apply only the rules and the permitting requirements that we have in place right now.
Make a motion to.
It needs everything.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? There are none. Call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Melinda. Number eight, sixteen, from Mr. Green over in the Fire Marshal's Office. Consider and approve agreement between Liberty County and the Dayton Volunteer Fire Department. You're gonna mind.
He's gonna kick me out.
Yeah.
Don't give me a break. Yes, sir.
Okay, this is our standard agreement.
Yes, sir.
Any changes to it?
Yes, sir.
How many more do we have to go?
Four E S Ds in two cities. They have not returned theirs yet. The four E S Ds have not signed theirs yet. They're still talking about them internally. The City of Liberty and the City of Cleveland have not returned theirs either. They've had questions. They've been answered and it's balls in their court.
All the terms are the same as it was last year, though.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Let me ask you a question about this. The these contracts should be signed on October first, by October first, right?
Correct.
Actually.
They had them in September.
Yeah, and so there's a set number monetary amount for each one. What do you do on that?
Prorated.
Prorated?
Contracts.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
They turn in the contract, all these, they are coming first, if they have, but.
And that wording was added this year that they go into effect October first or upon the date that they're signed by both parties.
Well, it's not a contract, it's a number.
Well, no. But that's what I was saying. The wording is in there that it would go into effect on October first or on the date that it's signed by both parties if it's after October first.
Okay, so in that agreement that you had in here, a contract that says it was going to be eighty-three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month for, for calendar year. So that, that'll change, right? If you can't go back.
Well, it'll change for the first month, effective the date that it's signed. So for the month of October, it would, it would be less than what it would be going forth with the remaining eleven payments.
Got you.
Yeah.
Is any of the E S D boys, what they're concerned with, why they're holding up?
No, sir. I've, I've asked, and they're still talking about it internally. They've not been real specific. Some of the concerns have been about the background checks that are now required based on some incidents that have happened in the last couple of months. So they're trying to figure out if they want to subject their members to that.
Okay. All right, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The only thing is it had the number of volunteers from the Dayton, and it was only thirty-five. Seems like it'd be many, many more than that.
It's not.
And so it, it's a little scary when you see it in print, you know, what we've got.
You're gonna be seeing that a lot more of that, hate to say it, but.
Yeah.
As population grows, you know, the reality is this, when you and I were growing up in this county.
Yeah.
More people worked in this county that were closer to the fire service where they could join in. Now a lot of folks work out of the county. And they're younger. They're doing shift work and what have you. And then when they get off shift work, they got T-ball. And they've got, you know, sandlot football and everything else. And they're gonna raise their kids. And so they're not volunteering like they used to. Even though the desire is there, it's, it's a time thing. So that's what we have to look forward to. There'll have to be a, some consideration of that in the future.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? There are none. Call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, no. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Andy. Eight seventeen, from Mr. Johnson over Emergency Management. Consider and approve maintenance of all county generators through Total Energy Solutions. Boy, it's a pet peeve if there ever was one right here, so.
Yes, sir. I bring to the court to establish a, a maintenance program for the generators. Chief Knox and Nick, Dennis and I, we walk, well, we didn't walk, we drove around the whole county. We got twenty generators that we need to get serviced. We need to have a maintenance plan. We don't have any type of guideline, anything as, as of now. I think in the past, different pre, all the precincts kind of had their own generators and they serviced their own, their generators. But this is a necessity and a need. But this is a necessity and a need. If we have any type of disaster, do we have anything backup, backup for generators?
I noticed that they've updated their quote from quarterly to biannually.
Yes, sir.
Twice a year. Then I also noticed that they're out of Broussard, Louisiana, and for each generator, they're charging us 30 cents a mile plus $50 in environmental fee. I mean, they're going to come down here and charge us, do three or four of them, and charge us as if they made an individual trip each time.
Well, actually, I have Chris, Chris Morales, he's in the audience, he's, he's representative. We have them, so Chris, could you stand up and come to?
Good morning. My name is Chris Morales, and I'm, I'm septic servicing Total Energy Solutions. And we're actually, that's our corporate office, and we are actually located in Katie, Texas.
So again, are you going to charge us for each individual one when a service tech is probably going to service several of them when he's out here?
We probably serve, uh, service most of them in three days.
Yeah.
And depending on how many people are available, that can, either they need a support or go by software, but the multiple techs have once and finish them off, if you're that way.
So do we got the money for this?
There's a blank look, you know.
So the, the individual owners of these compressors or generators, we're still responsible for exercising them weekly to make sure that they're going. This is just, these are just PMs, right? And then you're going to do a load check on, to make sure they're generating power when they do work. Okay, so.
And I'm definitely in agreeance that we need something. I mean, it's, 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 it's bad. I've got to deal with these. We're looking at $34,000. Thirty, what, $34,485. I'm just kind of wondering, since our budget just got passed, do we have this in our budget? And can we pay for this?
I mean, this isn't in the budget. Because I didn't know about it two months ago. Can't be paid for it, yes.
Make a motion to approve.
That's what I was waiting.
I'll second it.
Motion from Bruce, second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries, Lee.
Based on the look on his face, there'll be no more.
Yeah. You're going to mine. Item number 18 and item number 33 and number 34 are executive session items. I'll ask that we skip over these and go into executive session at the end of the regular session and then bring these back up after executive session. I didn't see 19.
You said 18 or 12?
33 and 34. Okay. Uh, number eight nineteen from Commissioner Karbowski is considering to approve appointing Kalinda Segal on the ESD number three board.
She lives in the area. She's quite familiar with EMS, what they do out there, and is volunteering her services.
Really?
Excellent. So.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David.
I'll second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion?
I, I should caution the court that we still need one other.
Yes.
One other.
So I, 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 spoken briefly to Bruce. I had one person that, you know, works for the county that lives in the, that ESD, but didn't have any interest.
I'm, I'm still, I've got some applicants now that I'm going over.
Yeah, and start twisting arms.
My next commissioner's court, I should have another member.
Okay. Got a motion from David, second from Gerald, and further discussion is, I think, completed. Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty from the sheriff. Consider and approve requesting approval of the updated inmate funds policy. The update policy includes a debit card procedure. The jail will start on November 1st, 2025. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Currently judging our policy, we have that any inmates that have ice holes will be given a check when they're released from our facility. Any inmates that are going to another agency, if they have a hold on them, when they go there, either we give them a check or mail a check to that agency. We're adding here that inmates that are released to the street will now be issued a debit card instead of a check. And so that's just addition.
Matthew, anything on that? We're good?
So who issues the debit card? Yes. You're, you're off.
We're office.
We have this, this, hundreds of people that we owe them 32 cents to.
This will be like cash. So when they leave this with this debit card, it will not be replaced if they lose it.
Sorry, this will be like a cash card. The debit cards will. And so if they misplace or lose that card, it is not on us, it's on them.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Judge, could we go back to item 19?
Yes, sir.
I, I, it just occurred to me that we need to designate who that person is replacing on the board. If it's either Mr. Luna Morton, I'm, I'm blanking on the treasurer's name.
Not that.
The vacancy.
The vacancy.
Yeah, but their positions is determined by the ESD board itself.
I know, but since we're only, we're only submitting one name right now, we have two that we need to do. We, we have to know which person we're placing.
The second, the secretary.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's right, she did, yeah. So could we?
Go back into a motion on that?
Yeah, yes, thank you, just to clarify.
Need to resend the previous motion, all in favor, say aye. Okay, let's go back for a new motion. Is it okay, Lee? Didn't mean to be like the auctioneer today, but you know.
Okay, who voted, who moved?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kalinda.
No, no, wait, I'm, I'm still on the rescinding.
We need to resend, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Bruce, you got, you got the motion to rescind?
No.
I do.
Greg does, okay.
I'll do it, I know.
It's all a stereo up here, y'all.
I don't, I don't care.
Yeah. And second was Gerald, was that you?
No.
David, okay. Motion, Greg. Second from David to resend the previous motion.
Who is the secretary?
All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Now, now we need a new motion.
There it goes. Okay. This is the motion to add her as a secretary, right?
Replacing Kathy Warner.
Okay. So that was a motion from Bruce to.
Make a motion to appoint Kalinda Segal and replace Kathy Warner on the ESD board.
Second from Greg. I heard that that time.
Thank you, Matthew.
All right, thank you, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Matthew. Okay. Move on down to eight twenty-one from Mr. C. Considering approved the below assets belonging to road and bridge number precinct four as salvage. Well, old army, what are we going to be throwing away?
Lots of old auger that are dumped. It's pretty much true, too.
So you got four of them out there, Gerald, that just?
Yeah, we were putting, we were putting some things up for auction, and then there were some things that were just not auctionable. Right. They have scrap metal value and nothing else.
Okay.
Yes, you're welcome to them.
Matthew's.
This sounds correct.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You good with all this, Dwayne?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from David. Further discussion?
I just, on those sprayers, I think the rules have changed on, on how to use them, so they're not even legal to spray with.
Right.
All right, hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. C, eight twenty-two is all yours. Considering approved soliciting invitations to bid number 2602 for fuel.
Yeah, it's just our annual bids due in November.
Motion from Bruce, I mean Greg, I mean. Second from Gerald.
No, David.
Was it David? Man, y'all got it kind of like aim toward men, say that, okay. David. Hey, you're going to be sitting here, y'all.
Yeah.
Just letting you know.
That's all good. You're doing good.
Motion from Greg, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Actually, it's allergies. My ears are plugged up so good right now. Eight twenty-three from Mr. C. Consider discuss take action regarding the contracted vendor for 24-11 asphalt overlay Vulcan Materials Asphalt and Construction LLC being purchased by Durwood Green Construction Company. Okay, Gerald.
Okay, we've had this bid for, just for asphalt overlay for a year. Then y'all just recently renewed it for another year, and then they sold out that part of their business to Durwood Green. We discussed it with county attorney's office. If nobody's in a big hurry for asphalt, we can rebid it, might be the easiest. Or I don't know if we could just, they said they would meet the same bid if we want to stay with them, but probably easier just to rebid it.
I've reached out to Vulcan, Mr. Norwood, and they was just about as shocked as we are that they sold that part of the company.
Yeah, but they're still keeping the same crew, so whatever the court wants to do on this.
Eric, what are the options?
I'd recommend rebidding it.
You recommend rebidding?
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
Might get a better deal?
Yeah, they just don't buy any asphalt, do any asphalt overlay anytime for about a month.
Okay.
We don't, we haven't used that much of it, and most of it was under ARPA funds anyway.
Yeah.
Which is gone, so.
I've done very little asphalt.
Y'all usually do asphalt overlays like November, don't do them November through March or something like that? Yeah. Use a little time, a little wiggle room.
Yeah. Make a motion to go out for bids.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Go out for bids, second from David. All right. Any further discussion? Matthew, is that okay?
No, we, I, I agree. I think that's the best way to go.
I know Dwayne's going to be happy with that because he might get a better deal.
Where's that chance?
There's that chance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-four from Mr. C. Consider and approve the purchase of a new truck in the amount of $29,060.50 from Seawall. Family of companies through Bibleboard Contract, 724-23 for the fire marshal.
Yeah.
This is going to be a little truck for the.
He can drive, too.
We'll have a Tahoe, too. And my girl inspector's starting hopefully right at the beginning of the next pay period, and she will need a vehicle to get around the county.
For $29,000, does it even have air conditioning?
Does it, does it come in red?
No, they didn't have a red one on the lot. I could have ordered one for another $8,000, but I, that's important. Now, if the windows were extra, we'd opt out of those.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay.
And thank you for thriftily spending the money on this.
Very good.
$20,000 less than the next available one. So yes, I tried to spend the money for a smart move.
Uh, item number eight twenty-five from Mr. C. Consider and approve soliciting the sale of surplus property through an online auction.
Yeah, we've, uh, we use it outside an auctioneer, and as the next auction is in November. This just approves that we can advertise a date in the local paper. We'll bring a list the next court of what exactly will be put in the auction for y'all to approve.
Okay. What say the court? Motion from David.
Proving second.
As you're a mumble.
Okay. Motion from David, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-six from Mr. C. Consider and approve an order authorizing the purchasing agent to extend the date specified in a bid notice for the opening of bids when it is in the best interest of Liberty County. It's law of government code section 262.026A.
Yeah, this has been in effect for a long time. Sometimes, it doesn't happen often, but every once in a while, we'll have a bid told us out for a certain date. And then because of questions or whatever, we want to extend that. So instead of coming back to court, which would take a while, this authorized the purchasing office to extend it for another week or two or whatever.
Especially now because of the way we have to post things, so.
Right. Make a motion to approve.
Motion from David, second. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item number eight twenty-seven from Commissioner Arthur. Consider and approve putting the permit and inspections department under precinct four, Commissioner Gerald Clark's department.
Right now, at this point, we're taking no action on this. Gerald and I've talked to it, talked about it, and we're going to, we're going to work together for a couple of months and transition in on this.
Right. Well, you know, as, I'll just clarify one thing. Traditionally, precinct four has had the engineering department. And of course, when Commissioner Wilson became extraordinarily ill, then we transferred over to Greg. So this is something y'all will work on.
No, I, I appreciate the court and Greg giving me a little bit more of a honeymoon to, although I, I feel like that ended seven months ago. But certainly, I, I, I'll get with Greg and Melinda, and we'll, we'll, we'll start that transition.
Okay, got a motion.
Second.
Greg to table, second from Bruce.
They've got to take no action.
Take, take no action? Okay. I figured we'd bring it back up eventually, but okay.
Well, we, we will.
Take no action? Okay. All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, nay. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Really, y'all, I am having a hard time here. I didn't, I didn't get my sinus made this morning. They're plugged up. Number eight twenty-eight from Ms. McCarty, Ms. Poston, over in county attorney's office. Consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Trident and TruState Pipeline for the use of designated county roads located precinct two in exchange for a $300,000 road bond.
Is this going to be an upfront cash bond or?
It's a cash bond, I think it'll do upfront, some upfront work.
This item was tabled from last court. Commissioner Arthur wanted to table it and work some things out. Do you have any updates?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-nine from county attorney's office. Consider and approve amendment to the TREC unimproved property contract between Liberty County and Charles L. McGuire for the purchase of lot number three, enter block 23, tax trap blocks. tax trap blocks four, seven, and eight, Liberty, Texas, for seventy-two thousand for the purpose of extending the closing date until October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
For those that are not familiar, this is the property between the cartel building, I mean, I'm sorry, the K-Shine old building that Harrell's in and the new building we just purchased will be used for a parking lot.
And I do believe that date on the amendment is October thirtieth, not the twenty-eighth. But that's a nominal issue. You can, you can go forward.
Make a motion to approve for closing date of October the thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Got that, Lee?
Got it.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. What about three of them? Greg, I'm going to get you since you're out of the seat. Got a motion, second, motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. Item number eight thirty, county attorney's office. Considering approve payment up to an amount of seventy-two thousand for including closing cost for the purchase of lot number three, enter block twenty-three, tax track lots four, seven, and eight in Liberty, Texas.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Second, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. Motion carries. Number eight thirty-one from county attorney's office. Considering approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Entergy for repairs to county road six-eleven, which is Norcross Lane and county road six-six-eight located in precinct four for continued use by Entergy during the construction of new wood structures and wires with new metal poles and wires for eight miles in Liberty County, Texas. Gerald, can you go get some more power out there?
No new power, just a better pulse to support the lines. But so this one was a little bit different in that the interlocal agreements that we've been doing with the pipelines and all the, the, the format has been different. So I contacted Matthew and Catherine because Energy, they're wanting to start this project in November and if we went to the, to the boilerplate that we're using, it would require a recycle through their attorneys. And so asked Catherine and Matthew, would this one be okay? The last one that we had, we just completed. If you, if we recall, we were able to get some nominal dollars out of them to, to repair county road six-eighty-five from their last project. It, it went up almost to that point. So now they're carrying the power on into Dayton. They're actually going to use more city streets this time than county roads. So it's, it's really minimal impact this, this go around.
Matthew, y'all.
Yeah, we have no objection.
Happy with the road use agreement?
No.
Okay, what say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. That motion carries. Eight thirty-two from county attorney's office. Considering approve, considering approve, consider release between Liberty County and Enterprise Ethane Pipeline LLC to previously approved road use agreement for the use of county roadways in precinct one in lieu of prepaid damages in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Sound good, Bruce?
Need to make, I'm going to make a motion to table this for right now. Enterprise is wanting to inspect and go over these damages again.
Okay.
I'll second table.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Gerald. Table it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. That motion carries. Okay. At this time, we have three items to consider in executive session. Items number eighteen, thirty-three, and thirty-four. So I'd like to request someone make a motion to move an executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion from Bruce, need a second. Second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. So now it is ten forty-one. And we are in executive session. Twelve twenty-two. Please, that sound about right?
Yes, sir.
Twelve twenty-two P M. We're back in regular session. Commissioners' court. Of course, the executive sessions were held under the five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two-five government code. Confession attorney and also, let's see, contracts being negotiated too. Reasons. Move on to item number eighteen of the regular agenda. And that was, uh,
Uh, proof.
Consider approve execution of the certificate of substantial completion of Liberty County Northwest Annex.
Consider approve, go ahead and execute the certification signed by the county judge.
Got a motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on over to item number thirty-three on the regular agenda. Consider and approve the amended agreement regarding subdivision rules and regulations for development between Liberty County and Calara Land LLC for a residential development called Liberty Meadows of a one-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-four-oh-four acre tract of land to be located in Liberty County, Texas. What's the court's pleasure on that?
I believe, I believe we're going to take no action on, on this item.
Is that a motion?
That is second.
Hang on. Okay, Gerald and.
Bruce.
All right, I'm caught up.
Yeah, a motion to take no action. Gerald signed it by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number thirty-four. County attorney's office was consider approve any litigation decisions related to the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, second amended remedial order for immediate suspension of operations and closure of Liberty County Jail and the contested case currently pending in the State Office of Administration.
Catherine, could you read that off?
Sure.
Catherine.
You will need to authorize continued negotiations with the Attorney General's office regarding possible abatement of SOA case and.
Hang on. I'm not that fast of a typist. What was it with, about the what case? Silla?
Possible abatement of State Office of Administration.
Abatement of.
Case.
Possible abatement of.
State Office of Administration. Pending case. And potential compromise and execution of agreed compromise.
Okay, I'm lost. Motion to authorize continued negotiations with Attorney General about possible abatement of the State Office of Administration case and potential compromise in execution of what?
An agreed injunction.
Agreed. Okay.
I'm reading someone else's notes here.
Yeah. Bruce, is that your motion?
So be that my motion.
Thank you. Appreciate.
It took you a while, spit it out.
I know.
Have a similar.
I'll second.
Motion from Bruce, second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor of say aye. Likewise, that. That motion carries. And. There was an item number four, but it's not a.
There's no action.
No action.
That was a closed discussion item. There's not.
Okay, so, Bruce.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of say aye. We are.